Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the County Council meeting taking place on Wednesday, the 20th of October 2021. This meeting is being broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, could I ask everyone in the hall to switch off or make silent their mobile phones, please? Firstly, members, we start today's meeting coming to terms with the tragic events that took place on Friday at Bellfields Methodist Church in Leith. Sir John Amis MP was killed during his job he loved, serving his constituents. This event of last week has left the country in shock. Colleagues, I have sent a letter of condolence on behalf of the council. I am also sad to announce the passing of former Derwentsey District Councilor Kevin Howe. Kevin represented the Havana Award of the former district council from 2003 to 2007. Thank you, members. Before we move on to the business of the agenda, I would like just to remind you of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. You will note that measures are once again in place for social distancing and a one-way system is in operation. If you need to leave the main hall at any point, please do so following the one-way system as you leave and re-enter the room. You must wear a face mask if you need to move around the hall. However, I would ask you to limit your movements around the hall as much as possible during the meeting. You can remove your face mask when you are seated. The external doors will be opened periodically to provide ventilation. Any requests to speak must be made using your voting handset. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of the committee services will assist you. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and wait until one of the microphone operators is in proximity. The microphones are being wiped down after each use. Please be patient as the staff do their best to coordinate these arrangements. Before I move on to today's business detailed on the agenda, I would also like to welcome to the meeting members of the public. You are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings. However, I request politely that you do not disrupt the meeting. We'll move on to item one now, members, the minutes of the meeting. Can I have a mover and second to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 22nd Second, please. Thank you. Are the minutes agreed, members? Thank you. Can we move to item two, declaration of interest? Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on the Okay, members, thank you. Item three, chairman's announcements. Colleagues, you will recall at the last meeting I referred in attendance at events in my capacity as chairman, and I have continued to enjoy attending events over the last month. These events, which are showcasing the best of the county has to offer, have included a celebration evening for the concert Women's section of the Royal British Legion for 75 years, a royal visit to the Milburn Gate development, the Lumiere programme launch, and a reception for Durham University international students at the town hall. Once again, I would like to welcome you all to the meeting. However, I would ask that everyone be respectful to each other during the meeting. Robust debate is part of the democratic process, but I would ask members to respect the views of others and not to point fingers at each other during the debates. Where points of order are raised, once a ruling has been made on advice by the head of Legal and Democratic Services, it will not be revisited. One final point is to remind members of their responsibility to attend all mandatory training sessions. If you have not yet attended the mandatory induction sessions, look out for the final sessions which are being arranged shortly. Thank you, members. Can we move now to item four, the leader's report? Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report, please?
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
There's been a lot to celebrate since we last met, not least our success in making it on to the long list for the UK City of Culture 2025. A lot of hard work has already gone into preparing and promoting the bid, and there is a lot more to be done if we are to secure the title for County Durham. However, I am confident that Durham is deserving of the accolade, and with so much at stake in terms of benefits to the county and the wider region, we are very much committed to giving the next phase of the competition our all. I would again ask and encourage members to visit the Durham 2025 website and share our social media messages with as many people as possible in order to show your support. We also heard this month that we had been highly commended in two categories at the MJ Local Government Achievement Awards 2021, the Digital Transformation Award for the accelerated delivery of our digital strategy, and the senior leadership category recognising corporate management teams' expertise and dedication in leading the authority through the pandemic. I'm sure all members will join with me in congratulating everyone involved. And following Cabinet's approval of nearly £50 million of investment in the third phase of Net Park, we welcomed George Freeman, Minister for Science, Research and Innovation at the Department of Business, Energy and Industrial Strategy, to see the site for himself. With the weather starting to get colder, our winter maintenance programme is now fully up and running. During the winter season, 1,700 kilometres of County Durham's Priority One roads will be treated, covering almost half of the county's road network, and we have 42,000 tonnes of salt stocked in our barns. We're giving County Durham residents the chance to nominate the important local buildings and heritage items which they value the most through our local list project. Part of a national pilot initiative, the project will see such loved gems, which may not qualify for national listed status, added to the council's local list to help protect them. And looking forward to the next months, we will see the return of Lumiere, the UK's leading light festival, spreading across four nights from Thursday, the 18th, to Sunday, the 21st of November. With 37 installations across the city and wider county, this year's event promises to be bigger, better and brighter than ever. I hope everyone will take the opportunity to come along and enjoy it, and let's show the world what we have to offer through our Lumiere Light Festival and demonstrate why County Durham should be named City of Culture 2025. Thank you, Chair.
Do any members have any questions on the report?
Thanks, Chair. Councillor Carl Marshall, leader of the Labour Group and councillor in Stanley. Couple of questions on two different parts of the report. Clearly, culture and tourism has a massive role to play for our economy in County Durham, and there's an awful lot of work gone in over the past 10 years to try and encourage visitors into the county, and as a Labour Group we fully support the bid for City of Culture. But what I'd ask is, when can members of the council expect to see the benefits to every one of our communities across the county set out very clearly if we're successful in being named the UK City of Culture? The second point I wanted to make was in relation to the MJ Awards, and just to ask the leader whether she acknowledges the work of the Labour Group who ran the council over the past two years, and the work they did with the senior leadership team, and standing shoulder to shoulder with our communities right across the county as we work to keep people safe and make sure people had food and could continue to live during the unprecedented times that we've all faced together. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you to councillor Marshall for the questions. I'm sure you're aware that we're in the early stages now, so as soon as we've got something to come back in terms of a report for the City of Culture, we'll make sure that you are briefed on that. And secondly, I'd like to thank all members of the council, because it wasn't unique to any one political group as to how members worked throughout the pandemic and how they supported officers in dealing with the crisis that the county faced.
Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you, members. Can I move to item number five, questions from the public? One question has been received for today's meeting. I would like to hand over to the head of Legal and Democratic Services to explain the
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. As the chair says, we've had one question for today's meeting from Dennis Southwell. The chair will invite Mr Southwell to ask his question and then invite the leader to respond. Once the question has been asked and answered, there will be no further discussion or supplementary questions allowed, and the question will appear on the council's website. Thank you.
Can I now invite Mr Dennis Southwell to ask his question, please?
Good morning. My name's Dennis Southwell, I'm past county councillor. My question is to councillor Hopgood, leader of the council. Why have a review for a building which is about to be completed in approximately four months, which was intended to be the headquarters of Durham County Council, when it is fit for purpose? When a planning report on the 5th of March 2019 indicated 99.74%, 99.74% of residents had no objections? Thank you.
Can I refer the question to the leader of the council, councillor Amanda Hopgood, to respond, please?
Can I thank Mr Southwell for his question? As set out in the Cabinet report we considered on the 29th of September, Cabinet asked for a review of the options for the new building to be undertaken, and we have now considered the initial outcomes of that review. Specifically, in relation to the planning report that you refer to, paragraph 131 of that report sets out that the total number of representations received was 964, of which 956 were in objection and eight were in support. In summary, that means that 99.2% of those responding were opposed to the planning application. As a new administration taking control of the council at an unprecedented time, with coronavirus having huge impacts on individuals and how people work, and also given the scale of investment in the new building, we feel it is only right and appropriate to undertake the review to carefully consider the options that are available for its further use. I can assure Mr Southwell that we will ensure that any future decisions we take in relation to the building represent value for money and are in the public interest. Thank you, Chair.
Can I thank Mr Southwell for attending the meeting and submitting the question? Can we now move on to item number six, petitions? No petitions have been received for today's meeting. Item number seven, report of the cabinet. Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The report sets out the details of the items of business we've considered as a cabinet at our meetings held on the 15th and the 29th of September. On the 15th of September, we agreed to progress with the next phase of development for Net Park and Sedgefield, which will help us to keep and expand some of our innovative businesses in County Durham. We also considered the council's budget position for the current financial year and the school budget plans for 2021/22. On the 29th of September, we considered the next steps of our leisure transformation programme and made decisions on two new build sites, as well as setting out details of how work will progress on our leisure refurbishments across the wider county. We also considered a report on the options for the use of the building at the Sands in Durham City, and last but not least, we considered the future options for the DLI museum at Aitli Heads, with further work being undertaken on the opportunity to refurbish the DLI building as an exhibition centre, gallery and cafe with dedicated space for DLI exhibits. The report with the council papers today contains the key points discussed by Cabinet and the decisions taken, and the full Cabinet reports are available on the council's website if anyone wishes to view them. Thank you.
Members, three questions have been submitted. Members are permitted to ask a supplementary question arising out of the question stroke answer. Can I now invite councillor Rob Crewe to ask his question, please?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Rob Crewe, deputy leader of the Labour Group and one of the two councillors for the Blackhall Division. Before I put my question, Chair, with your indulgence, can I very quickly thank officers for correcting the information at the top of this agenda item? You'll recall at the last meeting it was a little bit confusing, so I'm pleased to see that the correct procedure has been clarified. At the cabinet meeting held on Wednesday, the 15th of September, members considered a report on the forecast of revenue on capital out term, which included an update on progress made towards achieving MTFP 12 savings and referred to budget pressures across individual services within the council. It's been reported recently by the charity AGOK that council tax may have to rise on average by 10% next year just to ensure that social services can stand still. This follows the charity's concerns that revenues raised from the government's proposed increase in national insurance contributions will be diverted directly to the NHS over the next three years, leaving social care desperately short of funds, and that's AGOK's influence, not mine. Could the relevant cabinet member advise, please, what assistance has been sought or received from central government to mitigate any adverse impact on social care services during this period, and also advise which measures that have been put in place to protect social care budgets from additional pressures? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I think the appropriate cabinet member is councillor Bell.
Can I thank councillor Crewe for his question, which dovetails nicely with the motion at item 13. Councils have been provided with the ability to increase council tax via the adult social care precept in recent years, with a 6% increase allowed over the three years 2018-19 to 202021, and then a further 3% across 2021-22 to 2022-23. In addition, the social care grant available to Durham is £22.9 million, with a further £5.25 million provided in 2122. I would refer councillor Crewe to the medium term financial Plan 12 update report considered by Cabinet last week, which provided an overview of the health and social care levy announced on the 7th of September, to be funded through the introduction of an increase to both employers and employees' national insurance rates and an increase in dividend tax. The total sums to be raised from the announced tax rises is forecast to be circa £12 billion per annum, with the NHS expected to receive the majority of this funding, 85%, in each of the next three years to help address the current backlogs. The expectation is that after three years the backlogs will be at a manageable level and additional funding will then flow to social care, but a sum of £4.9 billion will be made available to local government over the next three years. The major draw over time for this additional funding will be to address the changes to charging for social care services, where the government has announced a range of changes to the charging regime, including a cap on care costs and the ability of self-funders to access the council's contracts. These proposals will have a profound impact upon the income that local authorities receive for providing social care services and unresidential nursing care providers. We await further government announcements as there is little by way of detail available at this stage, but our officers are currently assessing what these new measures might mean for the council, its residents and care providers across the county. The announcements to date would indicate that there is an expectation from government that demographic and fee-related pressures need to be met from council tax increases and efficiencies within the local authority going forward. As members will be aware, as things stand, there is a cap on the level of council tax increase that can be applied without a referendum, and that the additional flexibility through the application of an adult social care levy ends next year. The recent announcements do appear to open up the prospect for further council tax raising powers beyond next year, but at this stage we just don't know. The government has, however, stated that public sector employers will receive new grant funding to offset the budget pressures linked to employers' national insurance increases, and our updated MTFP forecasts include an additional £2 million of new grant funding to offset the estimated £2 million cost impacts of the 1.25% increase on the council's employers' national insurance costs from next year. The Age UK report, from which my colleague quotes from references, adult social care pressures, the major budgetary concern for this council in recent years has been in children's care rather than adult social care. I can, however, confirm that the council did respond to the recent call for evidence on the inquiry into long-term funding of social care, pushing for additional grant funding for social care rather than precept raising powers, free dementia care, which would resolve the most issues of significant charges, and a premium national living wage for the care sector to improve recruitment and retention of care workers. Finally, after his appointment as Secretary of State, I wrote to Michael Gove requesting that adequate support be given to councils on a needs basis for both adult social care and children's social care, pointing out that council tax is not the way for us to find the funds, given our low council tax bands and hence low ability to raise additional revenue through council tax. 1% on our council tax yields around £2.4 million of revenue. 1% on our council tax yields around £2.4 million of revenue. The council also makes its case through bodies like the County Council's network and other national bodies. I am not aware of any assurances from central government on funding going forward, but I am sure that they are having lively discussions on these matters. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Crewe.
And can I thank councillor Bell for his response. I think it's grossly unfair in these very hard-pressed times that hard-pressed families are having to pick up the bill for social care either through an adult social care precept or through an additional national insurance contribution. Would councillor Bell agree with that?
Thank you, councillor Crewe. Richard Bell.
I thank councillor Crewe for his supplementary question. The national insurance increase will be fulsomely debated, I'm sure, at item 13, and I will reserve comments for that. I would observe clearly that money has to be found from somewhere, and if it's not from local taxation, it has to come from national taxation in some manner or means. I would agree that council tax, as I've said in my response to the first question, is not the way for Durham County Council to fund its budgetary pressures on children and adult social care, given, as I've said, our limited capacity to raise council tax because of our low council tax bands and low ratable base. Thank you, Chair.
Can I invite councillor Rob York to ask his question, please?
Changes to the proposed leisure provision in Bishop Auckland have been amended, jeopardising the ability to create a new 4G football pitch for use by the local community. The previous proposals recommended by DCC officers also included a proposal to invest millions of pounds to create a community hub and spearhead a major regeneration scheme for Woodhouse Close. Can the leader of the council please explain whether Bishop Auckland will receive the same levels of investment, bringing about regeneration and positive changes to the community that Woodhouse Close deserves? How will the council help to fulfil its obligations and promises previously made to support grassroots football in Bishop Auckland and work to rebuild the partnership that has been developed with Bishop Auckland Football Club and the council? And as a supplementary, now the coalition has closed Sunnydale School, can we look at citing a community hub in Shildon, a town of 12,000 people and now without a secondary school?
Can I ask the leader to respond, please?
I'd like to thank councillor York for the question. At the time of the March 2021 Cabinet report, plans for the facility mix of each new build, including outdoor facilities and consideration of outdoor space, had not yet reached a stage of proposals, and as such, a 4G football pitch wasn't in the scope of the project. The council had not therefore committed to the investment in 4G pitches as referenced by councillor York. The provision of playing pitches is the subject of the emerging playing pitch strategy and emerging priorities within the south of the county. It should be noted that according to current calculations using Sport England formula, there is no demonstratable requirement for additional pitches in Bishop Auckland, as two such facilities already exist. When considering investment in pitches, the council has used this national-adopted formula and is committed to ensuring a balanced investment across the whole county based on need and the availability of funding. Officers have met with representatives of Bishop Auckland Football Club and are continuing to work with them to develop and understand levels of demand and how this can be considered as part of the playing pitch provision. Proposals for the community hub will be blended with plans for the leisure centre on the existing Woodhouse Close site. This approach will ensure the same positive opportunities for the immediate and wider community, yet it will represent much better value for money and a more operationally sound investment. The leisure strategy builds on the significant wider investment in Bishop Auckland in retail, leisure, skills and town centres. With respect to the second question, as it relates to Shildon, and that isn't part of this agenda, I can either give you a written response or you can bring it to the next full council when it will be on the Cabinet report.
Thank you. Can I now invite Carl Marshall to ask his question, please?
Councillor Carl Marshall from Stanley Division, Leader of the Labour Group. And I'd just start with an apology. My technology is playing up and this got submitted, so there was a couple of typos, which I'm sure members will have picked up on. Can the leader of the council please explain the reputational risk to the council for the decision taken by the coalition to build a third council EHQ on Aitli Head? The report informs there is only one interested party and states that the existing county hall is no longer fit for purpose. The council has an almost complete EHQ, and any new build on Aitli Heads creates uncertainty for investors, jeopardises job creation and is a complete waste of taxpayers' money, as we need somewhere for our staff to work from. How will the council be able to scrutinise this, given the chair of the Ovie and Scrutiny Management Board refused to call a special meeting to discuss the proposal, or will members who want to see a transparent process need to contact the local government ombudsman to ensure our taxpayers are receiving a fair deal? Thanks, Chair.
Can I ask the leader to respond, please?
I'd like to thank councillor Marshall for the question. The report that was presented to Cabinet in September clearly sets out that the council is committed to the development of Aitli Heads as a strategic employment site and sets the timescale for marketing the site. The report also clearly and directly sets out the requirement for a business case to assure the decision-making process of the council and has clear regard to economic, financial, commercial, environmental, management and strategic objectives. Based on evidence gathered to date and considering the interest shown in the building on the Sands, there is an opportunity for the council to explore the potential broader economic impacts that could be achieved through disposal of the building to the interested third party. The business case required will be completed as a matter of urgency to determine the council's options for moving forward with its office and civic accommodation. Therefore, I am confident that a prompt decision can be made which will fully address the value for money the public interest tests that, as I'm sure you are aware, we always need to apply in our decision-making. The business case that will come forward will be comprehensive and transparent, and all members will be afforded the opportunity to raise any questions or queries at that time. Should the value for money and public interest tests not be met by an alternative course of action, then, as the report clearly states, the council will occupy the building on the Sands as originally planned. With regards to our external auditors, or as you've referred to the ombudsman, I can confirm that they have and will continue to be kept informed and that they have raised no objections or issues with the course of action we are pursuing. As regards the involvement of scrutiny, their work programme is a matter for the scrutiny chairs and vice-chairs and individual committees to determine, and not something that the executive, certainly not this executive rightly so, can get involved in.
Councillor Marshall.
Chair, it's my knowledge that one of the Cabinet members was at a scrutiny meeting suggesting agenda items that should be added to the work programme just last week. But that said, Chair, if the coalition wants to build a third EHQ and sell off one of its three EHQs, how is publicly announcing-
Question, Carl, you're going off on the track there. Come, have a question.
Sorry.
Are you getting to it? Are you getting to your question?
Sorry, yeah. If the coalition wants to build a third EHQ and sell off one of the three that it has, how is publicly announcing that there's only one interested party negotiating with the council on the building at the Sands going to secure the best value for the taxpayer?
Thank you. Would you like to respond, leader?
Thanks for the supplementary question. In terms of what we've always said is that we would be, whether you believe it or not, transparent, so to say that there was more than one when there is only one is totally inappropriate. And as I have already said, the external auditors are more than happy with what we have done so far in terms of the report that we have produced. It is the first report, and I would ask that you, I doubt it will be patiently, but that you wait until you see the next report and come back with some more questions at that point.
Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you. Can we move on to item eight, review of the local council tax reduction scheme 2022/23? Can I invite the interim corporate director of resources to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Hopefully everybody can hear me. Paul Darby, the interim corporate director of resources. Members, the National Council Tax Benefit Scheme was ended on the 31st of March 2013 and replaced with a requirement for local authorities to develop and adopt their own local council tax reduction schemes and to review that on an annual basis. This report sets out proposals for the Durham County Council Local Council Tax Reduction Scheme that will apply next year in 22/23. Whilst pensioners, who now account for around 37% of our current caseload, must be fully protected under any local scheme, we are free to determine locally any cap we wish to place on working age claimants. Any changes to our scheme from year to year must be subject to public and stakeholder consultation in advance of council making a decision. When the local schemes were introduced, the government cut the grant funding to local authorities and effectively passed all risk from increased incidence of claims to local government. Many local authorities sought to offset that grant loss at the time and subsequent reductions in funding by capping the maximum amount of support available to working age claimants. For 2013/14, the first year of the new arrangements, this council took the decision to implement a local scheme that mirrored the entitlement afforded to all claimants that existed under the previous National Council Tax Benefit Scheme, and in each year since, the county council have taken the decision to extend that protection. Durham County Council is the only council in the North East and one of only a handful of councils nationally to provide this level of protection, with around 80% of all working age claimants currently receiving 100% council tax reduction support and having no council tax bill to pay. In July of this year, the Cabinet considered an update to our MTFP 12 projections and also considered whether to submit proposals to council to change the council tax reduction scheme next year. The recommendation of the Cabinet was to continue with the existing scheme for at least a further year, and this report seeks to do just that. In arriving at that decision, Cabinet were mindful of the costs of recovery and the impact on collection rates, as well as the cumulative impacts of the government's welfare reform agenda over recent years. Significantly this year, the Cabinet were also mindful of the impact of the pandemic, which saw the incidence of claims and the cost of the scheme rise steeply last year and where residents in County Durham were able to be supported to a greater extent than in other areas. Members will note that within the report, there are recommendations to continue with the commitment to pass on to town and parish councils a share of the local council tax reduction scheme grant also next year. The recommendations in this report are therefore for council to agree to the extension of the existing scheme for the reasons outlined in detail in the report, which also includes a detailed analysis of our caseloads, and in doing so, commit to undertaking a further review next year to inform options for 2023/24. The recommendations, members, are set out in paragraph 12.
Can I have a move for this report, please?
Councillor Richard Bell, Cabinet, portfolio holder for finance. I thank the director for the report, and I'm happy to move the report and its recommendations. The report sets out details of the review of the local council tax reduction scheme for 2022/23, where the Cabinet's recommendation to council is that the scheme remains unchanged next year. We are the only council in the North East that has a scheme that continues to provide support equal to that which was available under the old council tax benefit scheme, and I think we should be proud as a council that we have supported what is such an important benefit for people across this county. Durham County Council is doing its bit to support those on low incomes, but we must recognise, however, that this decision does come at a cost in terms of lost council tax revenues compared with virtually every other council in the country, and as usual, therefore, we will need to review this position in a year's time and bring proposals to council. With that, Chairman, I support the recommendations as set out in the report at paragraph 12, and would ask all members to agree to retaining the scheme next year.
Can I have a second, please, for this report?
Commissioner Allen Shield, representing the Leadgate and Merdamsley Division, and Cabinet Member for Equality and Inclusion. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to extend my sincere thanks to all the relevant officers and councillor Richard Bell for this report, and to the staff who administered this scheme and who have worked tirelessly to deal with the increase in applications during the last year. All members, past and present, can be proud that this council has been able to retain a local council tax reduction scheme that retains support to vulnerable and disadvantaged households equal to that which was available under the old council tax benefit scheme. As previously stated by the officer and councillor Bell, we are only one of a handful of councils across the county and the only authority in the North East continuing to retain a local council tax reduction scheme at the same level as was the case under the former National Council Tax Benefit System. We have ensured that the government's funding has been specifically allocated to support the local council tax reduction scheme, as it was believed that some local authorities in England may have used government funding for other budgetary purposes. The level of protection afforded to working age claimants, many of which are in work but suffering low wages, has been an absolute godsend during last year, and we have dealt with the devastating impact of the coronavirus. Whilst this obviously comes at a cost in terms of foregone council tax revenues, now is not the time to consider making changes to our scheme, and I call upon all members on all sides to agree the proposals I've set out in the report. So I am very pleased to formally second the report, Chair.
Thank you. Do any members wish to speak on the report? Councillor Crewe?
Thank you, Chair. I'm very much in support of the recommendation to retain the scheme, but in section eight, there's reference made to regular monthly recalculations of the universal credit and the local council tax reduction scheme. Is it too early to tell if there's likely to be an impact on the scheme of the removal of the £10 universal credit uplift?
Chair, is it okay? Yes, thank you, councillor Crewe, for the question. Yes, it is too early to tell the actual impact, but as that income is reduced, we will be recalculating people's entitlement to council tax support. What we find is the majority of people on universal credit, particularly those not in work, they'll be already on-
in work, they'll be already in receipt of 100% council tax reduction, so there will be no impact on those. But there will be some in-work council tax reduction claimants on universal credit that, as a result of the reduction in their universal credit, will see an increase in their entitlement to council tax reduction.
Councillor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair. In speaking on this report, I just wanted to take members from across the council back to the reasons why this scheme was first introduced. And it wasn't introduced because of a COVID pandemic. It wasn't introduced as a result of Brexit. It was a result of ten years of austerity from a Tory Lib Dem coalition in London. And the fact that... Sorry, Chair, you might not like what I'm saying, but it's my privilege to talk to the report, is it not?
It is.
Thank you. Okay. So I think it's really important for our families across the county that we continue with this, because the impact of austerity on families and cuts to public services across our county and across the whole country has really started to bite. And the issue around austerity is that it simply exacerbated the problems that our families and our hard-working communities across the county faced during the pandemic. It made things a lot worse. We've seen child poverty levels rising in the county. We've seen families having to be fed by neighbours and communities. So it's on that basis, Chair, that the Labour Group, and from a personal perspective, we feel that it's brilliant to see the coalition bringing forward the continuation of this, because it's never been needed as much for our families across the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Marshall. Councillor Sirtes?
Hi, you, Chair. Chair, I do stand in support of this report as well. One thing that I want to say is I'm incredibly proud that we have this scheme. I'm even more proud that, as a Labour member from the previous Labour administration, we're actually the ones that implemented this scheme from the welfare reform acted back in 2012, when we had to change everything. Under the Labour administration, we had a very strong track record of supporting vulnerable households and individuals fighting poverty, dealing with the effects of austerity, like my colleague, Councillor Carl Marshall, has just been talking about, but also dealing with the new welfare reforms and implementing initiatives and putting initiatives in place to combat the effects of austerity and everything that went on. So I think it's really pleasing to see that the coalition are actually continuing with a Labour-implemented policy. And I think that it's absolutely great that they're continuing to recommend this into 2223 at 100%. As we've previously heard, we are the only council in the North East to continue with this and one of only a few nationally. This safety net that our Local Council Tax Reduction Scheme offers to financially vulnerable households has never been needed more. It's the right thing to do. I do support both recommendations of the report, and I urge all members to do the same. And on a final note, I am extremely proud that this council continues with this scheme, and I hope that it's continued in the future too. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor. There's no one else registered to speak? Is there anyone wanting to speak? Or no? Councillor Bell, would you like to exercise your right of reply? No? Okay, thank you. Members, I haven't heard any dissent. Can the recommendations be agreed? Thank you. Can we move to item nine? The 2020/21 Treasury Management Final Outturn. Can I invite the interim Corporate Director of Resources to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning again, members. This report provides members with an overview of the council's treasury management activity last year and the position at the 31st of March 21 for the council's borrowings and investments. The report meets the requirements of the Prudential Code and includes details of our performance against our treasury management policy and strategy and the prudential indicators agreed by county council as part of the 2021 budget setting in February 2020. The table at paragraph 13 to the report provides a summary of our overall treasury management position. Members will see at the 31st of March 21, we had total debt outstanding of £363 million and total cash investments of £272 million. Our net debt position at the 31st of March 21 was therefore £91 million. Comparison figures at the 31st of March 2020 are provided in the table, and members will see that external borrowing at the end of the year was broadly in line with the opening position, but that our cash investments were £40 million higher, reflecting the receipt and carryover as significant grant funding linked to COVID at the end of last financial year. The council's borrowing activity is detailed in sections 15 to 19, and last year we took out new borrowing totaling £15 million and repaid a maturity loan of £10 million. The average interest paid on the council's external debt was 3.43% at the 31st of March. An overview of our investment activity is set out in sections 22 to 26, and the table at paragraph 23 provides a breakdown of the institutions, the length of the investments and the interest rates secured on those investments at the 31st of March 21. All investments taken out in the year and at the year-end remain in line with our treasury management strategy. In line with the requirements of the Prudential Code, the report sets out details of our performance against the various treasury management and prudential indicators, including details of our capital expenditure and financing and our capital financing requirement in 2021 and to the 31st of March 2021. Members can take comfort from the fact that this report identifies that the council continues to fully comply with its treasury management strategy and policies and is meeting all requirements of the Prudential Code. The recommendations as set out in the report, Chair, are to note the position.
Thank you. Councillor Richard Bell, would you like to speak to the report?
Thank you, Chairman. In moving that we note this report, I would like to thank the officers for this comprehensive update on our treasury management activity last year and for the information setting out our position as of 31st of March this year. It is pleasing to note that the council is in a strong financial position and has fully complied with all the requirements of the treasury management policy and strategy we agreed in February 2020. Carefully managing our cash flows, external borrowing and investments, and maintaining compliance with the relevant codes of practice in line with our prudential framework is fundamental to delivering on our fiduciary responsibilities for public money. Treasury management is an important area of activity, and I know we have a strong finance team that fulfills all the necessary requirements expertly and that the team are constantly reviewing our position for the benefit of the council. With that, Chairman, I would like to move that the council notes the report.
Do any other members wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you, members. Can we move to item 10? Report of the Audit Committee for the period September 2020 to August 2021. Can I ask the Chair of the Audit Committee, Councillor Alex Watson, to present the report?
Thank you, Chairman. It is considered good practice for the Audit Committee to report on its work to full council on an annual basis. And as Chair of the Council's Audit Committee, I am pleased to present this update to council today. This report covers the work of the Audit Committee during the period 2020, September 2020, to August 2021, a period which largely predates my involvement. And I would like, therefore, to recognise and thank Councillor Eddie Bell and members of the Audit Committee, past and present, for their contributions to the work of this committee. Through careful consideration and challenge of a wide range of officer reports presented, I am pleased to report that the Audit Committee has fulfilled its role in gaiting assurances to the adequacy and effectiveness of the council's governance arrangements, including the effectiveness of the risk management framework and associated control environment. In relation to financial reporting of the council's statement of accounts, the Audit Committee has ensured that any issues arising from the process of compiling, auditing and certifying the council's accounts were dealt with properly. It is to the credit of all those involved that this council continues to attain high standards in this regard and continues to receive unqualified opinions on its accounts and on its value-for-money arrangements. This has been achieved during extremely challenging circumstances, with the coronavirus pandemic necessitating the holding of a number of our meetings remotely, though I am pleased to report that we were able to return to in-person meetings from June this year. The report sets out details of the various meetings that have been held over the last 12 months and the issues that have been considered. There are three key areas of the committee's work during this period that I would particularly like to draw your attention to. The first area relates to the work of internal audit. The Audit Committee continues to promote and champion the work of internal audit across the organisation. As such, the committee agreed the internal audit strategy charter and the annual internal audit plan proposed by the interim Chief Internal Auditor and Corporate Fraud Manager. Updates are provided to the committee on a quarterly basis, and I am satisfied that the committee provides the appropriate challenge to this process, with a number of officers attending the committee to provide explanations and answer questions across the year. Secondly, the external audit of the council's statement of accounts. And June, the committee received a report from the Corporate Director of Resources, which presented the draft unaudited statement of accounts for the year ended 31st of March 2021. The draft accounts were certified and provided to external audit within the statutory deadline. Following the conclusion of the external audit, the accounts were approved by Audit Committee at its September meeting, a substantial achievement, particularly when we consider that many other authorities were not able to meet the statutory reporting deadlines this year. I understand we were one of only five county councils in the country to achieve sign-off by 30th September of this year. Quite an achievement. Finally, I would draw members' attention to the continuing good work of the council's corporate fraud team, the protecting the public purse. Reports we have considered demonstrate across the council the counter-fraud activity that has been completed in order to acknowledge, prevent and pursue fraud under the council's counter-fraud and corruption strategy. We have acknowledged fraud as a strategic risk and that prevention is indeed better than cure. To give some context, the corporate fraud team in 2020/21 completed 691 investigations over a wide range of areas, including into COVID-19 grant frauds, blue badge abuse council tax claims, bogus insurance claims and housing tenancy, to name a few. The team focused their efforts with the emerging COVID-19 fraud and scams, but not just investigating concerns, but also to protect the council and the community we serve, utilising its fraud communication strategy and awareness campaign. The council has an excellent local and national profile for their work in this area. They have developed strong partnerships with other public sector organisations, which continue to enhance the reputation that the council has. In summary, Chairman, whilst the report is largely for information, I would note that I consider the effectiveness of the Audit Committee to be excellent. We continue to improve, and I'm happy to move the recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Before I ask any questions on this report, can I remain, members, to keep their phones on silence, please? Any questions on this report, please? Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Chairman. Not so much a question, just like to acknowledge the work of the Audit Committee and thank Councillor Watson for his report and pay tribute to the good work that the committee does. The scope and extent of the work considered is a testament to all members involved, both past and present. I would also like to thank the officers who furnish the committee with the many detailed reports it considers, which allows it to provide robust scrutiny and assurance around our corporate and financial governance arrangements and our risk management and internal control frameworks. This is an essential and important area of work. It gives us all the confidence that this council is making good decisions based on good information, underpinned by effective internal controls and appropriate risk mitigation. I would particularly like to thank the committee for its role in the approval of our annual statement of accounts, where this year, once again, we were able to get our accounts signed off in line with statutory deadlines. Last year, Chairman, many councils were not able to achieve this, so a big thank you to all our finance teams for that achievement as well.
Thank you. There's nobody registered to speak. Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you. Can we move to item 11? Corporate Parenting Panel Annual Report 2020/21. Can I ask the Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel, Councillor Mamie Simmons, to present the report, please?
I am Councillor Mamie Simmons, Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel and also representing Fomagat Mua and Newton Hall. I am here today to present the Corporate Parenting Panel Annual Report for endorsement. But firstly, I would like to thank Councillor Ivan Jewell and the previous panel, along with all of the young people who made it possible. The annual report covers the period April 2020 to March 2021, and it has already been presented at lots of meetings, so you may well have had sight of it. I won't go through the annual report, but think you will all agree that there is a wide range of work taking place across the board to support the children and young people in our care, as well as our caregivers. I would like to allude to some of the achievements we are particularly proud of, like the work to allow pets into our residential children's homes, after young people told us how valuable this was to their mental health and wellbeing, as well as the work that has taken place to improve Wi-Fi connections, which has been most valuable during the pandemic, when our young people relied on technology for keeping in touch with friends and family, as well as for their schoolwork. Work is continuing to address the priorities identified in the annual report, and I look forward to providing an update on this in the next annual report. Throughout the year, we continue to meet with young people from the Children in Care Council, who hold us to account on the progress we are making against these priorities, and rightly so. Again, I would like to thank everyone involved in the work of the Corporate Parenting Panel. And with that, would like to seek endorsement of the Corporate Parenting Panel and with that would like to seek endorsement of the Corporate Parenting Panel Annual Report for 202021. Thank you.
Are there any questions on the report? councillor Gunn?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have questions, but I would first of all like to thank councillor Simmons for presenting this report, and I would also like to express my thanks to the Chair and the Vice-Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel, former councillors Ivan Jewell and Heather Smith, and indeed all members of the panel during the period which this report covers. I think that it's for me to point out as well that this was during a particularly difficult time of Covid challenges, and there are many initiatives, developments and achievements of which the panel should be proud. I'm not going to spend time going through that, I would urge everybody to read it, and I don't think that we should forget that as councillors, we are all corporate parents. I also think a huge thanks, Chair, has to go to every member of staff of this council who stepped up during this time. The work of the panel, the officers, the staff, in the many layers which they cover and are covered in this report, in my view, deserves many plaudits. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Gunn. councillor Miller?
Not so much a question but a comment. I'd just like to echo what councillor Gunn had said, and I was at an event last night, excuse me, with our children in care and young people in care, along with our Vice-Chair, the council and members across the chamber, and I think as members we should be extremely proud of our young people in care and the work that they've done, and I would just like to put my thanks to the staff on record as well.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Varty?
Save you a walk, I'm pleased to turn around. Thank you, Chair. I would like to add what everybody else has said. I don't usually like to say the same things as everybody else, but in this case, I'm absolutely delighted to. I was at the CICC meeting last night. It was wonderful to meet young people that are so positive, and I think we should all push that farther on. I don't think we do enough in pushing on the Children in Care message. Sometimes people are so negative about them, and we have so many positive young people. So if we can do that in Durham and put the positive message out there and let other people be negative in the rest of the country, because ours are so positive, and I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity on the panel for getting to go there last night, because it was so rewarding for me and they were so wonderful. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you. There's nobody else registered to speak? Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you. We'll move to item 12, Adoption of Casupcombe Quarington Neighbourhood Plan. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Regeneration, Economy and Growth to present the report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everybody. This report sets out to counsel the proposal to make, and also known as adopt, the Casupcombe Quarington Neighbourhood Plan. The 2011 Localism Act introduced measures for local communities to prepare neighbourhood development plans. A detailed legislative framework for undertaking neighbourhood planning was set out in the Neighbourhood Planning Regulations 2012. Today, the council have made or adopted seven such plans, and they are for Waltonham Westwick, Grid Acliff, Sedgefield, Witten Gilbert, Durham City, Lanchester and Oakenshaw, and a number of further plans remain under preparation. The Casupcombe Quarington Neighbourhood Plan relates to the whole of the Casupcombe Quarington parish area. The group have progressed the plan through the statutory consultation stages, and the examination ran from March to June 2021. This was undertaken using written representations. The final report was formally submitted to the County Council on the 9th of June 2021. The examiner concluded that the neighbourhood plan met all of the statutory requirements. However, a number, 22 in total, of the recommended modifications were needed to enable the plan to satisfy the basic conditions and then proceed to referendum. These modifications were carried out and the plan was sent to referendum. It was declared that 90.49% of votes from a turnout of 568 people, or 12% of the electorate, were in favour of the neighbourhood plan. Subject to the agreement by full council, a formal decision statement will be issued in accordance with Regulation 19 of the Neighbourhood Planning Regulations 2012, and these will be published on the council's website and installed in appropriate locations, including County Hall and the Parish Council Office in the neighbourhood plan area. Copies will also be sent to those who have commented on the plans. Chair, I'd like to conclude by thanking the council officers who have supported in this process, and to the local parish council, local members and communities who have engaged in the development of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a mover for this report, please? Microphone, please, to the council, behind.
Thank you, Chair. councillor Elizabeth Scott, portfolio holder for Economy and Partnerships. Could I start by commending the residents of Casupcombe Quarington on their hard work in preparing their neighbourhood plan over the last few years? I do know how much blood, sweat and tears go into these things, so well done, everybody. Their endeavours have been suitably rewarded by an overwhelmingly positive response in the recent referendum. It is therefore clear that the policies in these neighbourhood plans reflect the priorities of local people, and they will now be used by planning officers when considering planning applications in these areas. I am therefore happy to propose the recommendations in the report.
Can I have a second for this report, please?
Councillor Wirth, Cabinet Member for Rural Communities, Highways and Community Safety. This is the eighth such plan that we have adopted, that we're adopting today, and I would just like to encourage all other parish areas throughout the county to look at doing a neighbourhood plan and get the communities involved. With that, I'd like to second the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on this report? councillor McKeown?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say a personal thank you to Frank Salisbury and Richard Cowan, who really pushed this forward in the villages and at the parish. It's been a long time coming, and for Frank in particular, it's taken up a lot of his time and energy, completely unpaid, unremunerated, and I just wanted to thank everyone who's engaged with it, but in particular those individuals.
Thank you, councillor. There's no one else registered to speak on the report? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? councillor Scott, would you like to reply? Are you okay? No? In that case, can I ask the council to adopt the neighbourhood plan and authorise the Head of Legal and Democratic Services to meet the publicity requirements contained in the Neighbourhood Planning General Regulations 2012? Thank you, members. We move on to item 13, Motions on Notice. There are two motions on today's agenda. One was carried over from the previous meeting and an additional motion. I will now hand over to Helen Lynch, Head of Legal and Democratic Services, to remind us of the procedural rules regarding motions. Helen?
Thank you, Chair. The usual rules of debate apply this morning, so movers of a motion have five minutes to speak and seconders and other speakers have three minutes. Members may only speak once on a motion, other than the mover, who has a three-minute right of reply before the vote. If an amendment is moved and seconded, the debate is on that amendment. Only one amendment may be moved and discussed at any one time. No further amendment may be moved until the amendment under discussion has been dealt with. Each member can speak once on an amendment, except for the mover of the original motion. They have a right of reply before the amendment is put to the vote, but may not otherwise speak on it. If, following the vote, the amendment is carried, it becomes a substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate returns to the original motion. Thank you.
councillor Fraser Tinsley, can you move your motion, please?
Thank you, Chair. Fraser Tinsley, Wellington and Hunwick Division. And I'm sure you'd agree with me, Chair, speaking as a non-partisan Chair of this council, that there's nothing destroys residents' trust in politics more than politicians who don't follow through on the promises they make at election time. And there's nothing worse, you know, than when that politician's the most powerful politician in the country. Now Boris Johnson, our Prime Minister, on the steps of Downing Street on 2019, said this: "My job is to protect you, your parents, your grandparents, from the fear of having to sell your home to pay for social care." Why is this important? It's important because for us as a council, 29% of our budget goes on adult social care. It's important as well because the changes that Boris Johnson has announced are going to harm people in County Durham, and I'll explain why. Now, what's happened so far, you have to look back. 2011, Andrew Dillnot, he had a commission into social care, and he announced that there should be a cap on the amount you pay as an individual towards your social care of £35,000. I remember that figure, £35,000. Now successive coalition, Tory, Liberal Democrat governments, they just sat on this figure until this year in September, when changes were announced. Now, what was announced was something that was, it was big, £36 billion. That's a lot of money. It's nearly half we spend on education. It's probably about a third, nearly, of what we spend on the NHS. Apparently, it's nine aircraft carriers, somebody told me. It's a huge amount of money here. But the problem is, the people who are going to pay for this are the people who can least afford it. It's those in the middle. Now, for many people, what this is going to come down to is this issue of this 86 billion pound cap on the amount of money that you're going to have to pay for your social care. What this means for most people is it's their house, it's their property that's going to be impacted here. Now, why does this have a bigger impact on County Durham? This is why. Because in County Durham, the average price of a house is £145,000. £86,000 is 60% of that. If you're in Surrey, the average price of a house is £345,000. It's only 25% of that. You're going to get really hit in this county. You are going to more likely have to sell your house to cover this cost of your social care. Now, this fundamentally is just not fair. It's not fair on our residents and families, who are much more likely to lose their home. It's not fair on the young people, who are less able to pay for this. It's not fair on businesses, because the National Insurance contribution increases hit businesses, and they're recovering from the pandemic at the minute. It's not fair on us as a council. Remember as well, as councillor Bell spoke earlier, only a small proportion of this initial £36 billion over the first three years is going to the council. £5.4 billion is going to adult social care. So it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a mirage here that it's actually addressing social care in the first instance. And there's a sting in the tail as well for the council to do with self-funders. Self-funders who do pay for their own care are able to ask the council to go and search that from. So we lose our ability to buy in bulk and get a reduction on the fees. So that's going to hit our taxpayers as well in this area. It's not fair on future generations, who are going to have to come back and sort out this mess, because this doesn't sort out the mess that social care is, that's been left to fester for too long. And if you don't believe me that it's not fair, just ask Sir Ed Davey, leader of the Liberal Democrats, who said in the Commons on the 7th of September in this debate on these changes, that it was, guess what? Unfair. So what I would like to do...
One minute, member. Thank you.
What I would do is, I'd like to move this motion, and in moving this motion, I'm explicit in condemning the changes. They must be condemned because the impact will be excessive on people from County Durham. The Prime Minister is going back on his promise, particularly for people in poorer areas like County Durham, who will have much more impact and much more chance that they will lose their house because of these changes. It must be condemned, and there's no other thing to do than this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Need a second for this motion? councillor, yes?
Thank you, Chair. councillor Alwing, and I also represent Wellington and Hunwick Division. Chair, councillor Tinsley has already very ably described the severe financial consequences of the Tory government's changes for the residents of County Durham. I want to make it very clear to everyone that these changes are not about social care. They are about making our residents pay more to prop up our amazing NHS, which has consistently been failed by the government. Failure to invest, failure to pay our NHS staff the salaries they deserve. Possibly, just possibly, some three years down the road, some of that national insurance money will go to social care. But the changes do not address the social care crisis, and, yes, councillor Bell, there is a social care crisis. In the first three years, less than one pound in six pounds will go to social care. There is no guarantee, no guarantee, that councils will receive money to fund social care. Really, there is no guarantee. There really is no detail, no plan for social care, and no plan for care workers who are underpaid and undervalued. No plan, no detail, just more smoke and mirrors. And all of us here, we know that adult social care, 29% of the total budget, is the biggest, one of the biggest with children's services, biggest financial pressures on this council. You know that, councillor Bell, you're in charge of the finances. You also know of the uncertainties...
One minute, member.
You also know of the uncertainties we faced. We faced delayed comprehensive spending review, fair funding review, shared prosperity fund, all on the back of years of austerity, austerity policy, cuts, cuts, cuts. So I just want to say that this social care, we want. We want for our residents good social care, and if we don't condemn these government changes, we collude with the smoke and mirrors tactics of a government locked into making our residents pay more and more and more for an NHS we already pay for and a social care plan which simply does not exist. It's not acceptable to me, Chair, and I hope it's not acceptable to you. I second this motion.
Thank you, member. Does any other members wish to speak on this motion? councillor Bell?
Yes, I wish to propose an... Yes, I wish to propose an amendment to the motion. It's the same amendment as was distributed at the last council meeting, currently being distributed, and will appear on the screen shortly. I will wait till members have got that before I start speaking, if I may, and the clock starts. Chairman?
Just one moment, just one moment.
Okay, councillor.
Thank you, Chairman. I move the amendment as printed and hopefully displayed momentarily, and speak to it as follows. Let's look at the facts of the situation. There will be an increase of 1.25% in National Insurance, paid by workers of all ages, and the same increase in tax on dividends. And this will raise around £12 billion a year, with most of that in the early years going to the NHS to tackle the backlog exacerbated due to the Covid pandemic. The motion makes no mention of the NHS, this amendment does. Councillor Gunn mentions the NHS, and I'm almost astonished to hear her talk about it in terms of condemning additional funding going to the NHS. I never thought I'd hear a Labour councillor say that, but there you go, truly smoke and mirrors. I am sure that members of all sides will welcome additional support being given to the NHS and to social care. Clearly, this money has got to be found from somewhere, and with many billions of unplanned expenditure and borrowing during the Covid pandemic, the Chancellor, unsurprisingly, has decided to increase taxes. I would agree that the proposals tabled by the Chancellor leave a lot to be desired. I am sure that all members would agree that capping the sum that people will have to pay at £86,000 for the provision of care services to be welcomed. The overall charges against some individuals will be reduced, both due to the cap and to the lifting of the threshold of capital sums people are able to hold before charges kick in. The motion does not propose any alternatives to raising National Insurance or the £86,000 cap. This is unsurprising, as the Labour front bench in the Commons didn't have any other ideas either. In contrast, we are trying to constructively propose an amendment that proposes a percentage cap on an individual's assets rather than a numerical amount, to counter the fact that different houses have different values in different parts of the country. And we would also like the Chancellor to look at taxes paid by all ages and an unearned income in preference to raising National Insurance. In the event that Mr Sunak does not change the plans after we write to him, there are upcoming announcements on the national living wage, where an increase of around 6% is expected, which will help offset the impact of the National Insurance increase upon younger people. And I note also that the central government has recently awarded the council £4.7 million in household support funding, and we look forward to announcing soon...
One minute, Member.
...how we plan to spend this to support vulnerable people in our county. This amendment proposes positive ideas to tackle problems and alternatives to the proposed increase in National Insurance announced by central government. I would therefore urge all members to support this positive amendment, and with that, Chair, I move the amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Sexton?
Thank you, Chair, councillor Sexton, portfolio order, Adult and Health. I'd like to formally second the motion and reserve the right to come back, please.
I agree with councillor Tinsley that the current proposals are unfair. What I don't understand is why, when he's had a month more to think about this, he makes not one single suggestion as to what we as a council should actually do. He doesn't even make a suggestion that we write to government to complain, not a single suggestion. Surely that's an absolute minimum that we should be doing? Otherwise, what's really the point? It's just political rhetoric. I do wish Labour motions would in future actually offer a solution to things, rather than just attacking things.
Councillor Hobbles?
Councillor Hobbles, Trimpton and Thornley Division. Thank you, Chair. Social care is an integral part of our society and economy. Adult social care covers social work, personal care, practical support for younger and older adults over 18 years old with a physical disability or mental illness. It also includes drug and alcohol dependency, as well as support for unpaid carers. I think it's important that I outline just what social care covers, so people do have a broader understanding. The pandemic has placed more pressure on the care sector. Even before the Covid, there were problems in the social care sector. Despite twelve ring papers, white papers, and five independent commissioners over the past 20 years, people in need of social care continue to fall through the cracks of a social care system that is riddled with holes. The sector faces many challenges, social care reforms, and the lack of appropriate funding settlements. Social care funding is very complex, I think we would all agree with that. There are more people in the UK work in the social care sector than the NHS, and I applaud them all. Many of social care services are well known. The majority of public, 56%, think individuals having to use their house and assets to pay for care is unacceptable. I believe it is also unacceptable. Users of social care and their informal carers are shoulderin a great deal of the pressure. Based on current spend and the UK gap, will be £18 billion, which will open up by 2030. More people are asking for care support, but fewer are getting it, as demand leaves social care systems at crisis point, yes, crisis point. Tackling the challenges of social care reforms requires an appropriate funding settlement, and unless this happens, we will continue to have a broken care system. Transformation is required to make social care systems fair, sustainable...
One minute, Member.
All people want is a level playing field and care when it's needed. Will social care share realistic be enough for what is meant to cover? £36 billion from government over three years, but only £5.4 billion over three years to social care from the £36 billion. Will the social care part realistic be enough to cover all the government's plans? £1.5 million strong care staff within our workforce, low paid. Care providers, care users, and workers feel short-changed by the proposed health and social care levy and reforms. After decades of delay and broken social care, sector feels short-changed and disappointed at the proposed funding levels and timing of the reforms. £36 billion across three years raised by a decade...
Thank you, Member, I'm afraid the time's up.
Thank you, Chairman. Much appreciated the time. I must be supporting councillor Frazer's motion.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Wilson?
Councillor Simon Wilson, Satterston Division. Yeah, in terms of looking at this motion, I see the solution which has been added by councillor Bell. Can you please tell us, last month councillor Bell, did you say the exact words, do you really think that the government listens to Durham County Council? Because I remember you saying that when we suggested going to government about an issue we had in motions last month. Again, I see at the top déjà vu, removing condemns and putting considers in. This adult care cap should be condemned because of the impact it will have on residents of County Durham. And I'll tell you what, I'd like to ask the Lib Dems, the independents, and the other Green councillors, who actually stopped being in lockstep and doing what the Tories and their three MPs in this region want, and standing up for the residents. I'll be voting against this amendment.
Councillor Tinsley, you have registered to speak next, but we have others registered. You will have the right to reply before the vote, is that okay? Thank you. Councillor Mulholland?
Councillor Mulholland, Burnfield and Dipden Division. I'd also like to speak against this amendment as well, I think it's another example of the coalition watering down a motion. We can see here that, you know, condemns has been taken out instead of considered. Also, the mention of disproportionate effect on young people has been taken out, and again, you know, I think it's terrible the way that, you know, other members across the room are following basically what the conservative line is on this. And I would echo as well what my colleague said as well, is I do vividly recall the leader of the Conservative group mentioning, do people really listen to what happens here in Durham County Council? Which does really beg a question as to the authenticity of the end of this amendment. So I think it's important as a council that we take stands on these things and that we're very clear on our position, and I think it's right that we do condemn this, because it does disproportionately affect young people, does disproportionately affect people in County Durham, our residents, the people that sent us here. So I think, you know, I urge members to vote against this amendment, keep the true meaning of the statement, and don't follow the Tory party line on this. Thank you.
Councillor Marshall?
Just a couple of points that I wanted to add to the debate, maybe it's on a slightly different tack to start with. Look, it's a democracy in here, we're all able to disagree, even within our Labour Party, we sometimes disagree, you know, we see that in the press and in the media. It's okay to disagree, that's part of the system that we find ourselves in. So what I would say to all members is, if you don't agree with what the government are doing, if you don't think that what the government's doing nationally will be a fair deal for your community, why not be able to condemn it? We've seen other Conservative groups join with Labour colleagues in other councils around the country to condemn these proposals and these changes. Why not? Why are members looking at putting politics before the people they represent? I'm sure that was a slogan on some leaflets that I read at the last elections. Chair, this is another example of the government putting the brunt of taxation back on our hard-working people. It's trying to use, in councillor Bell's words, smoke and mirrors. Our NHS has been underfunded for years, it's been systematically broken up under this Tory government over the past 10 years, with billions of pounds taken out of it. We haven't dealt with the funding crisis in the NHS, and that's why the country wasn't ready for the Covid pandemic. Now to pull this local taxation together on top of the social care precept that our residents already pull out, it's just scandalous, and we should condemn it, because it's not right, it's not a good deal for our communities, it's not a good deal for our residents. Money that was given out for PPE contracts to Tory donors, to companies that were set up within a few weeks, get that back, that'll go a long way to help interfund some of this. I think, for me, Chair...
One minute, Member.
There's one thing, and just in summarising, and I'm going to ask for a name vote, but I just want to make all members across this chamber clear about why I'm doing that, because if they haven't cottoned on, all of us are accountable to the public out there, every one of us, to the people who turn up at the polling stations and vote for us. So in asking for a name vote, I'm putting every member on here on notice, the decisions and the views and the opinions you express in here, you're accountable for them. If you don't agree with what the government's doing, condemn it. But I can tell you now, as a party and as a group, we're coming to a community near you, a request of name vote, I'll have the members to stand up behind us to support a chair, and we're going to let every one of the residents across our communities know exactly what every one of you are doing in here, and that's following your Tory masters, not just in Durham, but nationally as well.
Hi, councillor Joanne Howie from Woodhouse Close Bishop Auckland. Reading this, the amendment to me makes more sense to consider. Social care and NHS needs a massive overhaul at the moment, and nobody else has stood up and tried to do anything to make this check. It's about time something is done. This may not be the way that people want it to be done, and it may need to be looked into further, but something does need to be done. So I will go with the amendment and put considers, because it all needs considering further, not just putting this in place, but I will definitely vote with the amendment, because like I say, there's no other ideas coming forwards, and that change needs to be made. Not all of our MPs did also vote for this in Parliament either, so you can't bring all three saying that they have done that if you look into what was voted for. Yeah, but we, you know, Labour brought in the PFI loans as well, which paid a lot of pain, made us pay more into what was going on out there at the time, so we lost a lot of money that way as well, that never, ever is considered, as you like to look back in time all the time. So yeah, something needs doing, so I will definitely be voting with this amendment to the motion.
Councillor Good?
It might help to focus minds if we emphasise the unfairness of what's going on in the system, and we can do that by looking at things in a broader context. The wealth and the number of billionaires in this country has grown exponentially over the last few years, and they're queuing up to open bank accounts offshore to avoid taxation. In addition, we've squandered £37 billion on a taxing test system that doesn't work. And here we have a government telling people in this county that if they want a decent social care system, they're going to have to pay more council tax, they'll have to pay more through an additional social care precept, they're going to have to pay more, perhaps by losing the houses, through the adult social care cap, which is the point of this motion, and they'll have to pay more through additional taxation, through increased National Insurance contributions. The government, Chairman, is taking money out of the pockets of working families in this county, and it's not just affecting families, we forget about the impact on the local economy. For every pound that's taken away from the families in this county, we're taking a pound out of the tills on the high street and on our corner shops. That simply isn't unfair, and if we can't condemn that, Chairman, as a council, then we're not worthy of representing the people that we do. So I condemn the government for what they're doing through social care. I agree with the motion, and I stand against the amendment. I think we must include that word, condemn. We must condemn the government for what they're doing to the people and the businesses of this county. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Gunn?
First of all, I want to say I oppose this amendment very strongly indeed. What weak, weak, weak words these are, and the first line, considers, considers, and could be improved. What does that mean, could be improved? It's nothing whatsoever, it's an amendment that's been put, I think, simply to try, very much by the Tories, to go against what we've put forward here... to go against what we've put forward here as a very strong motion indeed, in condemning what the government changes will actually do. Can I also say, I'm really sorry that councillor Bell couldn't actually hear what I was saying. Perhaps it's the acoustics in this hall, because I didn't say at any time that I was against investment in the NHS. What I actually said was, that what I was against, am against, will continue to be against, is that this government has made no investment in the NHS. And what it's asking our residents to do now is to pay more and more and more. That's what I actually said. Chair, I oppose this amendment very strongly. Thank you.
Members, can I just bring to your attention that we are approaching the 30 minute rule limit for motions? Just to let you know, okay? Councillor Hopgood.
Thanks Chair. Can I move a motion without notice to extend the time allowed on item 13, which we're discussing, to go beyond the 30 minutes, but to not go beyond the two and a half hour limit for the full council meeting?
Could we have a second for that, please? Richard, Richard. Oh, go on, go on, mhm. Can we agree this motion? Agreed, thank you. Councillor McGinn.
And thank you Chair. I wasn't going to speak on this motion, but I was quite perturbed by the deletion of the word younger from councillor Tinsley's motion. It's not just working age people who are impacted, obviously all working age people are. But for younger people in particular, the national insurance rise has a disproportionate impact. And that's something that should really be reflected in the text of this motion. For the past year and a half, people of my generation and younger have made massive personal sacrifices during the pandemic. We gave up our freedoms, a lot of us gave up income in what should be the best and most carefree years of our lives, so that we can help people in older generations. And we did that willingly, because it's for the greater good. But now the government seems to be coming out with policy after policy that impacts people of my age and younger, without really acknowledging the things that we've done as a generation to help other people. And actually, I think that Durham County Council should be reflecting that, even in a small way in this motion. So this is part of the reason why I'm not going to be supporting it.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Hopgood.
Thanks Chair. I have to say I'm absolutely stunned by that last comment. People of every age gave up a lot in the last two years, people of every age continue to give up a lot. With regards to the amendment to the motion, just to be clear, nobody on this side takes orders from anybody. What we do do is, and this could be something that lots of people could learn from, is how to work with other people. And as councillor Marshall said, just because you have a difference of opinion doesn't mean that you can't work together and you can't work constructively. It's very easy to bring a motion to full council that is a statement. It's much harder to bring something that offers a solution. And what this amendment does is goes back with a solution. It confirms that what's happening is unfair, is disproportionate, that affects the people of County Durham much more than it affects the people in the southern shires of this country. But what it does do is offers a suggestion as to how it could be improved. I listened to councillor Hovell's comments, and I apologise if I misheard, but I'm pretty certain she said it had been 20 years for adult social care with the problems. Now unless my maths is really wrong, nine years of that was the Labour government as well. So I'm pretty certain that it's not unique to one particular government, the problems that we've had with both the NHS funding and social care funding. I would urge people to support this, and I particularly do support the bit about all working age people. Because everybody who contributes national insurance, whatever their age, is being disproportionately affected. And people who live on an income where there is no national insurance paid are benefiting. Hence why we have the amendment that we do. And as I say, I take real offence to the fact that councillor McGinn only thinks younger people have sacrificed things during the pandemic.
Councillor Andrews.
Veronica Andrews, I'm councillor for Burnfield and Dipton. And I'm speaking here today as a retired nurse and the mother of somebody who's been failed by the social care system. I've worked in nursing all my life and spent some years in social care and seeing how it works. The staff are badly treated, they're badly paid, they're letting down the people they're caring for, because they're not being given the education and the support and the training that they need to do that. It's a system that's completely broken and it needs to be rebuilt from the bottom up. And that's why I'm supporting Fraser's motion. Because I think the words like condemn means express complete disapproval. And I do completely disapprove of the social care system as it is and it needs to change. Consider, think about, you know, they're poles apart, there's no similarity, there's no comparison between the two words. So I'm supporting this motion wholeheartedly and condemning the other one, the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, member. Councillor Sterling.
Thank you Chair. Angela Sterling from Del's Road Division in concert. I promise I'll keep this short. I'm a new councillor and this is the first time I've spoken in one of these meetings. And I might be misunderstanding something here. But I'm just reading this and the original motion is clearly just a statement with no action. And it clearly says there's a discrepancy between the percentage paid in County Durham compared to various other places, particularly in the southern shires of England. So I'm confused why Labour are so opposed to this, when the amendment clearly says that we want to address that percentage difference. You know councillor Tinsley mentioned the 60% to 25% difference in the original motion. This absolutely tackles it. So I'd just like to agree with councillor Hopgood that we've improved the motion, we've added to it, there is action there. The original motion is purely a statement. And as a newbie sitting here listening this morning, I just hear a lot of political grandstanding when actually our side are completely focused on finding a solution to the issues. Thank you.
Councillor Malloy.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Malloy, Spennymore Division. On the face of councillor Tinsley's motion, I was considering supporting it, to be fair. And with regard to councillor Bell's amendment, his first paragraph, I don't agree with. You know, I think the government does need condemning for it. And I do think it's a government problem that they created the Covid backlog in the NHS. You know, so they do need condemning for that. However, what the amendment does offer, what councillor Wilkes and councillor Hopgood mention, is solutions. And I mentioned at the previous meeting, when a Labour motion came forward to condemn the removal of the £20 uplift in UC, that they didn't provide a solution then and I couldn't support it. And that's what we need to do, is find solutions, not just make statements. So looking at the suggestions, what the amendment wants to provide for this council to look at a solution, I will be supporting the amendments and as yet all the members do. Thank you.
Councillor Atkinson.
Yes Chair, councillor Atkinson from Eclif East in Newton Ecliffe. Are you listening? Chair, I've been listening to what people are saying, there's a lot of agreement around the floor. And I hear things like making no suggestions and coming up with ideas. Well, there is a suggestion. You know, we've suggested, this party suggests that we condemn the Conservatives' actions in this matter. So that's all we're asking you to do. We're not particularly asking councillor Bell to do it, because we don't think for one minute he will. But, you know, everybody else in the room has an opinion, we all have an opinion. And any idea, anything starts with a suggestion. So councillor Wilkes stands up and says, you know, what are you going to tell us to do? They don't listen, who does Boris Johnson listen to? We have to have a starting point. And it isn't enough just to consider it. You know, we need a little bit more from everybody else. And the starting place for me is to condemn it, tell them what we think about it. And then, you know, by all means, we'll join in. We'll join in with the suggestions that you aren't coming up with yet. You know, we'll make suggestions, we'd be happy to, we'd love to, right? But let's start the ball rolling, you know? And the first, councillor Wilkes, first thing as soon as he stood up, he said, he agreed with councillor Fraser, but he hasn't made a suggestion. He did make a suggestion. You condemn it and we'll join in. We'll join in, help you out with all the suggestions after that. Okay, thanks.
Members, there's no one else registered to speak. Is there anyone wishing to do so now? Is that a hand from councillor Sexton? You reserve the right councillor Sexton.
Thank you Chair. Well, there's a lot being said. I think we can all agree, social care needs more funding. It is broken. We've failed to fund it, not just this current government, previous governments. And it's very, very complex. The motion put forward by councillor Tinsley is admirable, but it lacks a bit of depth. But for me, it also lacks the correct tone. And we're seeing this month after month. Let me tell you, nobody gives me orders on this cabinet. The leader of this administration is a Liberal Democrat and the first female leader of County Durham in its history. We're not led by the Tories, we sit down and we talk and we debate and we come up with the best plan. I think the motions that are being put forward need, especially when you're writing to government and you want them to listen, you need to be mindful of the tone and the language. And using things like condemn the Conservative government when it's going to sit on a minister's desk is not the great way to start. And remember, you're representing the whole of County Durham here, not just the Labour Party, not just all these members in here, the public. We need to change the tone, guys and girls. Be respectful and we're more likely to be heard. And I think this amendment actually gives us a better tone. Councillor Tinsley mentioned about fairness and is it fair? And I'm not saying I disagree with the percentage solution, it may be a good way forward. I've worked in central government most of my life and I understand contribution based benefits and means testing. It's very complex. This may well just be the start. And it may move as we go through the months and years to come.
One minute, member, please.
But you could also say, is it fair that somebody who just lives in another region has to pay twice or three times as more because their house is worth more? They may not have any cash at all, they may just have their home. So it is complex, but let's look into it and let's consider this. I would ask my colleagues, because of the tone of the original motion, I'll be supporting the amendment and I think we'll get much further in being listened to if we do so. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Tinsley, you have the right to reply.
Thank you Chair. I think we all accept adult social care is an absolute mess. And the question was, how do we deal with it? That's really what the issue is here. Now, this was the government's, and I think Boris Johnson quoted him here, right, said this was the once in a generation chance to do something about this. He said that. We've got a situation here where, if you look at it, basically this area, as some of the members of the group have said over there, it hits this area harder. It does do that. We have ludicrous situations where you can have somebody living in a rented house on near to minimum wage, paying this through national insurance, but the landlord of the house who's living on the rent that they're getting from these people, are paying nothing because they're not paying Class 1 National Insurance. That's just wrong. That's just a wrong situation. And then we're in a situation here as well where it's not fair, the changes mean that, for example, if you're getting private pension income, again, you're not paying anything towards if you do your national insurance. And then finally as well, I think councillor Gunn mentioned this, what is actually in this for the care providers? The people at the middle of this? 120,000 vacancies in the care sector. We hear this morning on the radio from the National Care Alliance, that one in five domiciliary care, that's people going into people's houses and caring for them, these are vacant. The positions are vacant in these areas. I mean, this is the canary in the coal mine here, domiciliary care. And this is going to really follow through into actual care. But I have looked at the motion, I've looked at the details that are being put forward there, the amendment, sorry. And looking at that there, I do see some merit in what is being said there. But there's a few things I'll bring out. The fundamental thing you're saying there is that what you want to do is to put this as a percentage of assets. Has an impact assessment been done on this? What would that mean? The reason I haven't put something forward is because I'm not arrogant enough to say that I know the answers. Basically what's happened here is you suggested something, you don't know what that would mean. That could mean, it could be capital flight in extreme instances where people are moving assets away from themselves so they don't have to pay for this. And then the other thing is as well, that you're saying that what you should also be doing is that looking at the people of all ages should be equal and paying for it.
One minute, member, please.
Fundamentally, the problem here is, what you're saying is that we should write to the Chancellor of Exchequer to consider changes. Well, I'll tell you this, the Chancellor of Exchequer has put this in the done box. This is done, they've moved on, moved on to something else. If we suggest changes, that isn't going to matter. It's not going to make a hair of a difference to these guys down there. They've decided this is the way forward. So that leaves them in a position where we can do and write into this Chancellor Exchequer. Councillor Bell mentioned earlier, he wrote to Michael Gove about this. Has he received a reply? Has a reply been anywhere positive about what's been said? I suspect not. So I think the only way to do this is to vote against this amendment. Because essentially and effectively, all we have to do is to condemn it, because they're not going to take on board anything that we say at this point. Councillor Bell has confirmed this, the facts on the ground have confirmed it, and there's no other way to go forward. Thank you Chair.
Members, councillor Marshall requested a named vote. Does that have the support of 10 people, please? Thank you, members. I'll pass over to Helen now, who explains the voting system.
Thank you Chair. So we're voting on the amendment as moved by councillor Richard Bell. It's one if you're voting in favour of the amendment, two against, three to abstain. And since we have a named vote, the way in which members' votes will be taken down and will appear in the minutes. Votes open. Votes open.
The vote is closed, members. Members, for the amendment 58, against the amendment 49, abstentions won. The amendment is carried and therefore becomes the substantial motion. Does anyone wish to speak on the substantial motion? councillor Marshall?
Chair, thanks. I'll keep this really brief because I do want to get to the next motion. I think for me, I'll be voting against this. It's a watered down motion, the removal of the word condemn is a bridge too far for me. It's not thought through, it's proposing something that's completely uncosted, where we don't know the social impact or the consequences for our residents across the county. The underlying issue with this is it still shifts the burden on the local people via a local taxation in County Durham. And I'll urge all members to vote against it.
councillor McKeon?
Thank you. I just wanted to come back briefly on councillor Hopgood's comments. I think that she did misunderstand me, I'm not sure whether that was willful or not. But I'd like to point her in the direction of a Guardian report on the 2nd of June that spoke of a sacrificed generation of young people in the pandemic. 64% of young people across Europe have developed a mental health issue during the pandemic. Younger people are more likely to have a service-based job, which means no working from home, more likely to be in precarious and low wage employment, thus falling through the cracks in the pandemic. We're all trying to establish our lives and the odds are stacked against us. And I would like there to be some appreciation of the fairly widely established fact that the socio-economic effects of the pandemic have disproportionately hurt younger people, in particular the younger people of County Durham.
councillor Almarod?
Thank you, Chair. And I'd like to request a named vote on this item, please.
So it's got the support of 10 people, okay. councillor Hopgood?
Yeah, just, Chair, in reply, I didn't willfully or intentionally misinterpret anything that the councillor said. Well, I did say that it was not unique to young people and that affected everyone within the county.
Okay. There's nobody else rechested to speak. councillor Bell, do you want to give your right to reply before we go to the vote? councillor Bell?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to highlight the absurdity of the Labour position. They criticise members of the joint administration for following the lead of a Conservative government and me, as a Conservative member, the Conservative leader on this council, and yet don't recognise that this amendment, now the motion, specifically criticises government policy and proposes positive ideas to look at. And no, we haven't costed or done detailed research on that, on the proposals, because that's not our job. So absurdity number two, Labour group. Why do you persist in discussing national policy issues that we're not responsible for and bringing them to this council? Why aren't you bringing them to your MPs? Why are you pursuing it through Parliament? Perhaps it's because your parliamentary representatives are as bankrupt of ideas as you are. The Labour front bench didn't have any ideas, condemned the national insurance increase, condemned an increase in tax and dividends, didn't put forward any alternatives. So absurdity number three or is it four now? That's Labour throughout the generations. You want more money for everything, more money for the health service, more money for social care, but you refuse to say where it's coming from. Express concern for young people, well, historically, the Labour solution to increased spending has been to borrow more. And where does borrowing go? Onto the shoulders of our children, our children's children, generations to come to pay back. There's more Labour absurdities being said today than you can shake a stick at. And with that, Chair, I conclude and ask people to support the substantive motion.
Just before we go to the vote, remember at the beginning of the meeting, I said order to each other, let's all a bit of respect to everybody here. Yes, we can have debate. Yes, we can have debate, but there's a way of going about it and some of this is not the right tone. So just play a bit cooler. Okay, members? Okay, members? Thank you very much. We'll go to the vote.
Thank you, Chair. So it's as before, but this time it's the substantive motion. So it's one in favour, two against, three to abstain. And just to remind you, if you press the wrong button, pressing the right button corrects your vote. Votes open.
Vote's closed. Members of the vote, for 58, against 49, abstentions won, motions carried. Members, it is now the time for councillor Malloy has indicated that he wishes to defer his motion to the next meeting to enable a proper debate because the time is quarter past now. So councillor Pete Malloy, we'll move your motion to the next meeting. That brings us members on to item 14, questions from members. No questions have been submitted for today's meeting. That concludes today's business. Before the meeting finishes, I would like to thank everybody for taking part and those members of the public and media who have watched the meeting. Thank you again for your attendance. Please exit the hall in a safe and considerate way. It would be helpful if you could please leave your handset and voting cards on the table. These will be collected once everyone has vacated the hall. And once again, thank you.